It's three thirty. I'm always on time. I don't like leaving. How you doing, how you doing? Oh, the other one, she's coming, she's out in the park. As if I know I have another one sitting there. Michael Johnson is not present. He's not here. Did you get that information that I put under your door?
Yeah, but I'm not sure how it was, because it had two words, two times.
Well, okay, well then, I will, uh... That's what I get, that's it? This means, uh, when the insurance man, I invited him to Mr. Pete's? Okay, right here, the insurance person, that means this is gonna be different. It's a repair that following that now, that the claims that were put in.
So you got him to speak, right?
Yes, I got a question, I want him to talk about that.
What about building security?
Okay, building security, you mean right here, insurance? Oh, building security, that's what I'm gonna tell you about, some of the things that, about the buildings that are up to the bill. Of a way that we need to, uh, better.
Gotcha, okay.
Better, and I wanna see what, what other building security that you have had in place during the procedure before now.
What's that, remodel report, what's that?
Okay, the remodel report is, I want it from 2018, of all of the reports that, like you said, you had to repair. How much repair has been done?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna break it down, I just did not put it out.
I just wanna make sure I have the right stuff.
Yes. Yes. I didn't, didn't, it's so much, so I just, as I go, then I will, uh... So I just put the items on, then I will be addressing, okay? Well, we can, okay. All right, we're gonna have an open meeting with prayer. Ms. Jackson, will you lead us to the prayer, please?
Uh, sure we will. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, thank you for the, this opportunity to come before your heavenly and precious presence. Lord God, we ask that you be with us, lead us and guide us in everything that we do today. Lord God, let our work be pleasing in your sight, let everything be conducive to your will. In Jesus' name, we give you glory and praise, amen.
First, I wanna thank everyone for coming out today, uh, this is some issues that, uh, we have been, uh, asked questions about. And we'll start with the first one. Uh, we're dealing with the building now. Uh, lately, we have had, a lot of people have been calling, this is the first time you hear that. That a lot of people have been calling, wanna know when, uh, you're gonna own this, when they'll be able to rent buildings. People have been calling and asking, say, they had called Ms. Davis about renting the building, and they were getting the, uh, statement saying that right now, that they wasn't renting, wasn't renting any buildings. So, we wanna know, you know, because we don't want to lose the money, and they going other places renting. So we wanna know, what are the procedures are you going to do, uh, with people renting the buildings right now?
I think it's a quick solution to that, Councilwoman, um, Thomas. As you know, we have laid off over six days of employees, staffing is a huge issue. The quick solution to that is for the council to revisit the contract. The contract that you all have for public buildings is that a staff, city employed staff will be a part of any event that was going on inside the buildings. So if you all will remove that out of the contract, there will be no problem moving forward to, um, having these buildings available for the public. But right now, with only two staff members in there, they can only rent buildings out when one of, one of them are available for the facilities.
Uh, I don't have a contract on it. I asked for one, they told me I couldn't get nothing, let you say so.
That's absolutely, I'm sure.
I have a question. I have asked for it. I'm new on this committee, over the building. I'm new on the, on the, over the building committee. And I never had one, I had asked for one.
I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
Yes, I had, I wanted to see for myself, how...
And as you can see, um, staffing says one employee from the Public Buildings Department, the City of Selma, will be present at all times during the event to represent the entrance of the City of Selma and to answer questions about the facility. That is in the contract that the council passed, but the council wanna remove that from this contract. For all units, we will allow anybody utilize the facilities, that wanna utilize the facilities. And we're just responsible for the opening and closing, and if there's emergencies, they can have a contact number, they can contact, um, the department here, Ms. Davis.
Well, can I ask you this question, ma'am? Okay, during the, we have the layoff.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, right now, with all the other events that are going on, uh, who's, uh, standing in now, it's on the book? Cause quite, uh...
Ms. Davis or Ms. Stephanie, yes.
Ms. Davis and Stephanie's been there, standing there. So, why can't, uh, what you already have on the book? Why can't, uh, Ms. Davis and Stephanie continue to, uh, and if they need assistance, could you bring in some, someone else? Because if you say the city need money, I don't, you know, I, I don't like turning down money when we say we, we need money to run on a day-to-day operation. And I understand what you said with the language in the contract here, we should have, uh, staff. And right now, we know that, everybody know that there's, there's a layoff.
Correct.
And, but we're still operating on a day-to-day base operation, which you still have these employees with these events that are going on. Can you continue to do that, or can you bring someone else in part-time, just whenever you have an event?
The issue, I think, is, as you know, how many facilities we have, Ms. Davis? You have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
Five.
Five is five, you oversee, but total of seven facilities in the City of Selma. And one, one day, we can have five, five events going at the same time. Um, I think the easiest solution to this is for the council to revisit this contract, to take staffing part out, and that's where you don't have to have a city staffer at these events. However, to strengthen the security board, and just make sure security is at, at these facilities at night events. I think that's something that's very doable, we can talk with the city attorney about that. Um, but the staffing issue in the contract is what brought up this issue.
Okay, so we can also, we can leave staffing in and put the work, or, or, um, council members, or just say staffing when available, or something like that, because they are available for... The staffing that we have now are available for limited events, right?
For the, for the, yeah, cause there's only two people, so they can't do it, right?
Right, so they are available for, for very limited events. And, um, as you, you may be aware, Mary, you may not be aware, several council members have volunteered and, um, voted to man some of these events, uh, during an open meeting, we did that. Uh, I guess we need to make it more official, uh, so that we can help cover some of the events. And we have actually covered a couple of events ourselves.
Is there a need for a council member to be...
Yes, we have.
Is there, is there a need for the council, councilwoman, um, being, is there a need? I think what is more feasible, because, for instance, you may have someone who's having an event, you don't want a council member inside their event. So would it just be feasible to remove the staffing portion, completely out the contract? And that way, we just reach the facilities out, hold people accountable for the upkeep of the facility. If they damage something, of course, that could be, um, um, a retain fee, um, to insurance, or whatever you wanna call it, to make sure everything is like it was when we, um, gave it over to that entity to use it. I just think removing the whole staffing out of that situation frees us up for the opportunity to rent all these buildings out, without having to worry about staffing to be inside any building, be it staffing or the council.
Yeah, it could make sense, but they also could not want staffing at every event.
That's what I'm saying, so we move all of it out, just move all of it out.
It could make sense like that, but not in the, in the sense that, uh, people don't want, uh, a city person there. Uh, cause it could be that they don't want staffing there.
That's what I'm saying, so we just move all of it, move all of it out. Um, that way, we don't have to worry about, um, you know, do we have staffing available, council member available? It's not up to us, these are private events. They are utilizing our facilities, and if they're utilizing our facilities, we hold them accountable for the upkeep of the facility. We check, inspect the, uh, facility prior to have them to sign off on everything in prime condition or whatever. And then we check it afterwards, before we give them their deposit back, um...
And there would be a staff person that comes to the debt.
We do a prior to the event, yes, and we do it after the event. So that way, you have everybody there during event time.
So at closing, the coun, not the council, at closing, the staff person would come back and make sure the list is checked out.
Well, we'll check it out, cause apparently some of these events goes until twelve o'clock at night, they can check it out the next business day.
Or the next day.
Right, and just before we give back that deposit, to make sure that everything is up to par. I just think it's a, it's a quick way to move forward, um, on any end, just removing that language out of the whole contract.
And so your two remaining count, uh, your two remaining staff people would then be doing what?
Well, right now, what they're doing, they're helping with the maintenance of all the buildings, they just don't oversee the rental facilities. They oversee all the buildings that we have operation going on the side of. So they will continue to do that, and they will continue to book events. Um, they're not on the system to just work events, that's not the purpose of, um, two women of departments. They just don't work events, um, they oversee all the city, all facilities.
I think that what you just said is, is, is good. So, we will have to do this at the next council meeting, uh, cause right now, I wanna ask you this question, Ms. Davis. Right now, uh, we have a couple people that is trying to get on the book. And, uh, they, they, they said that you told them right now you wasn't taking any, okay? So, right now, what you say with the, coming up to 2019, I know you have an event already, you know, on the weekends, I see you.
That's because they are already, they've already paid.
Okay, so you have...
They don't possibly, even if they have paid, hopefully they paid.
Okay, so if we, uh, work on this here to keep the city going, and make sure that we get the finance, you know, the money coming in to keep... I think that will, I think that will help us a lot, what you think?
I'm with you, Councilwoman.
All right.
I would recommend that we give this to Attorney, um, Jones, to allow him to see how the language need to be, um, placed inside this contract, and if, you know, you know, additional language need to be added. And that's something we can do prior to the next council meeting.
That's what I'm saying, you know, because...
Get back to you all in the work session, you all been ready for the whole council work session.
So, Councilwoman, you need to revisit President Boo.
Yes.
As we have agreed, he will, he will take a list to, um, President Boo will take a list to the attorney.
You don't wanna come?
He got new suit on, he don't wanna come.
President Boo will take the list of, of, uh, what we need to the attorney at, so the hallways are not bombarded, uh, at once. So, um, you give it to President Boo, cause I've been giving along with the other stuff that he has to, to give to the attorney as well.
Uh, Mary, we can kind of give him a little more brief of what you said, we could change or his...
So basically, since we're understaffed right now, um, the need for staffing in all these events is a burden for us to fulfill. Um, I'm suggesting we remove the language of having staffing at any event. What we would do is, uh, we'll do a building inspection prior to the event, check off to have the, um, the parties to sign off on it. Then we come back after the event to check off before we give a deposit back, um, before we, um, give it, give it back and say everything is still pristine, so... And I think it'd be easier for us to make sure all these facilities are continuing to be, being utilized, um, while we in a position where we staffing.
And because you have a lot of people, they're, they're trying to have events, or, you know, they wanna get on the...
Correct.
So they think they plan a year a month sometime, cause a couple of them, even, some of them will come into the meeting. Questions, who's gonna clean this building for the county?
Right.
If we ever with it some.
Right, and that's gonna make, can be a part of this contract. Um, I talked with, um, another council member who, Councilman Bowleen said that that was an idea he had that we can add to this contract, that, um, the individual party be responsible for the cleaning of the building once they utilize.
Hey, Council, uh, President Boo, I did, um, tell the mayor about, uh, council had volunteered to, to cover, just, just, just so he knew that. But the idea was to take everybody, kinda like it was when the council members covered the event for the Concordia event at the Evans Building, when we covered that event, sorta like that. Um, but, um, so I think the consensus now is just to take everybody out and hold the event people responsible for, seems like for cleaning, and, uh, everything else.
And, uh, also, Mary, I noticed that you said something about the public building fee you were talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I have been, uh, well, I asked before, and I'm gonna ask you, why are you present?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to know, uh, uh, all of the buildings that we have, that we lease out.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would like to go through, uh, I would like to go through some of those buildings.
Just that for, the building?
Yes.
If you was given time, Ms. Davis, um, to go through it, I'm sure there won't be no problem at all.
And, uh, I'd like to have a list of all of the steel.
That's that, the only list right there, thank you.
And also, I would like to, uh, I noticed in some of the, uh, event, uh, buildings that I've been in, where you have an event set, some of them need some improvement.
I agree.
Uh, uh, there's a lot of things that I seen, a couple things that I seen that, uh, we gonna lease our buildings, we need to, to keep them, you know, up to the standard. Uh, a reason why I'm talking, I'm going down to the next item on here, is the repair, the repair of the buildings. We have several buildings that, uh, you know, were involved in fires.
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh...
Which, I know Dallas Academy was, which one?
It's, it's, well, I mean, we have two right now, but being, we're dealing with the, uh, the other repair, fire and damage. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, we did fire, just make this, okay, tell me.
Okay, then I wanna recommend that, uh, I know with, uh, did you get the email that Mike has sent about the Dallas Academy building with the, uh, about the air conditioning?
Air conditioning.
Unit being taken out?
No, my, my email is acting crazy, um, but we're aware, we're aware.
Well, I have...
The best, the best way to reach me is through Ms. Simmons.
But can I say this, ma'am, too? We do call, you have two numbers that you call, and, uh, you can leave the voice list, but you never get a lot of persons.
Okay.
You get, you can leave a recording, you can leave a message on it.
Did you leave a message?
I did, and I returned your call on several occasions, you were asking in the building, when you called, and I returned your call.
What phone number you called?
It was a two oh five number.
I didn't see you call something.
But I'm telling you, I did, I got your message and I returned your call.
Um...
Well, we, we are aware of the AC units, I mean, that's why Ms. Davis found important about the AC units.
Well, see, this, that's why I wanted, uh, did, did Mr. Pete, he's coming? Hold on, we know what happened now.
About what?
Because there's some questions that I want to ask.
Which, I mean, what question you asking about, um, ACs at...
At the Dallas Academy?
Yes, they were stolen, we reported, um, so what's the question?
The question is, uh, I wanted to ask the insurance claim that was filed, was it included with the, uh, the air conditioning being taken out during the time of, was it a separate claim?
Yes, right there.
I didn't see.
This is the first time, you know, I saw the paper, I'm like, it is right there, yes, it was included, all of the lost ACs, cause you had seen the buildings, it was taken. The Dallas Academy ACs were taken, I'm not sure, was there another building, um, is there, no, there's only two, right?
Well, wait, it's like, James, didn't they take some of them?
They did, they're still working, they're, they're still processing that, though, I've been, um, hearing and insurance.
It's still in process.
And attorneys, attorneys got involved with that one, because, you know, we got to sell the hotel going on, so attorneys got involved with that one right now, they said let them have it.
And also, you got on the, can I see that?
Yes, please.
Do you have the Smithman building?
That's, that's, that's the minimum right there.
Okay, thank you. Go read that first, that first report from the, um, Dallas Academy.
From the Dallas Academy building?
Let me see it. This is everything, this is what they came back and said that was taken out, the second time, it's already on the first report. Now...
Need glasses.
Okay, we have the same issue, probably. I'm making the public, I'm making the process.
It's for the, for the box solutions, huh? Maybe you have a need from that.
Okay, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me ask you. So we have some, it's a fourth pass, so, uh... You say the, you got two different points.
Well, you have for each building, you have the Dallas Academy and the Smithman building, that's what you have in your hand now.
I know.
Dallas Academy, I think, was forty-one thousand, Smithman building was thirteen thousand. Um, it didn't meet the, um, deductible for one of the AC units, um, at the Smithman building, um, so they didn't reimburse us for that. Um, and the other claim you're referring to is to repair from the fire, that's been bid out, uh, from my understanding, the last week was bid out with insurance company, and that process is all pretty soon will repair and restoration of the Dallas Academy building.
These went out last week.
They actually opened bids last week, they haven't closed bid, they opened bids, they're actually inside of my, um, conference room that they did this. That's inside their report, if you look at it, stole the property, it's inside the Dallas Academy report, the original report.
So let me ask you this, ma'am, with the Smithman building, with the air conditioning being taken out of the Smithman building?
Yes, ma'am.
Right now, with, uh, you know, it's been cold?
Yes, ma'am.
And the weather, uh, you know, the safe, uh, what are you planning, are you gonna, when are you gonna throw that back?
I asked the council last evening.
I know you asked.
Would you all recommend for us to put them up with no one in that facility, and put ourselves in a liable position where someone can come in and do the same thing as you're bringing the units? The council didn't say whether or not you are in support of that, I'm just kinda leery of no one being inside that building, having those ACs in there all day, we know they're targeting city buildings.
But I'm, I'm gonna make that, uh, bring that to you on my next item about the security.
Okay.
Uh, I came over some, uh, I think that, uh, they need, well, it's up to the council, but I think that we're gonna have it open up.
We claim out, it's, they have papers out on that. The Dallas Academy was forty-one, I don't know the exact number, forty-one thousand?
Forty, forty-five, I would like.
Okay, and then, uh, Smithman?
Forty-five, it's forty-five.
It's right there.
This is the Smithman.
And Smithman, she got the Smithman right there.
This is Smithman. My next item is with the buildings, uh, with all of these buildings that we are operating, what, what, do we have cameras? We don't have any cameras on any of it?
Some of the buildings, some of the buildings, they are, I wish, who's that?
Any people, cause that's a question, I see.
Okay, um, are there buildings that's cameras in some of the facilities? I would have taken this courage to say that on all of them, that's a question, but you know... Yeah, the equipment was stolen out of Dallas Academy building prior to the fire?
There's something, um, um...
So, uh, I think we need to get the cameras then, cause, um, we are being recorded and we're talking security maps. Um, we need to get the cameras up there, some, some things we may need to leave out.
Well, it's only, it's only council members at dinner.
It's all magic, because...
What I'm saying, we're being recorded and we're talking security maps.
Yeah, but I'm trying to, uh, suggest, uh, with the...
Thank you, Councilwoman, yeah.
With the, uh, well, we still need to come up with a better suggest, better with, uh, running day-to-day operation with these, them being open, with the air conditioning. Do you think that, I think we need to, uh... Well, I would like to have copies, I would like to have copies. I'd like to have...
You keep both of those.
Okay, thank you. I think we should, uh, uh, with the air conditioning, we need, you know how you put those iron bars, cages over? I think when we put them back in, we need to be, have better security with our air conditioning units on the outside. Cause if you put those iron cages on them, like the other ones, that, that would keep them from, uh, taking them out.
It won't, it won't prevent them, it'll make it more...
But it'll be more.
It'll make it more difficult for them to do it.
Where it be, well, right now, you say you don't have, but two buildings with, so you need to, this is, okay?
I understand what you're saying, but, uh, even with that, um, the insurance is not covering that aspect of ACs. And, and the council will, will have to show me what ways you would like us to pay for that, um, cost money to, to put them steel cages around those ACs.
Well, I still have, I got another question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Mr. Pete.
Yeah, Sean, I probably have...
If, if, if I may, if I may...
I'm getting a minute, Mr. Pete, there's something I want to ask you.
If, if, if I may, Councilwoman?
Yes.
If I may, next time you have such a fine gentleman coming to the council, um, if you add him to the agenda, uh, so we know that, you know, we can, so in hospitality needs, we come in. I'm just teasing them, go ahead.
We're speaking. Oh, I started at three thirty, and, uh, I was the, right, the mayor said, you should... Okay, Mr. Pete, no, no disrespect.
So, that's something we can give estimates on, of course, um, you know, we have to, have to outsource that, put those steel cages up, or it's councilman, you know, just recommending maybe look at another alternative, on maybe seeing can we, um, um, place them back higher off the ground or so forth. So, we're looking to that and see what, what path we can go.
My second question is, with the, I have, are those buildings covered under the insurance?
What buildings?
The building, the city building, are all those city buildings covered under?
Yes, and that's, Mr. Pete, I tell it otherwise.
Oh, but I'm just, I have a question, you see, you, let me finish. These buildings that operate, for many years, for many years.
Yes, ma'am.
And in these many years, you haven't had, uh, security?
I only been here two years, though.
Not you.
But I'm just saying, all public buildings were going on to have security, all public buildings were supposed to have cameras.
When was that? Prior to my time, right?
We bought all the cameras.
Okay, prior to my time, got you. I know, it actually was like, right, I'm like, what are you talking about?
Like, there go the analog, the cameras are, those cameras.
Okay.
All of the public buildings were supposed to be secure with those, including block cars, um, all of the baseball fields.
There's some out there.
All public venues were supposed to be, uh-huh, it was about, if I'm not mistaken, seventy-five.
Those areas are covered that you referring to, but the other two, I had to, I, I'm looking to that.
Yeah, cause it was meant for all public buildings.
Okay, so, there is any, right?
So we may have some cameras running, running around somewhere. Angela, you know, will y'all purchase those cameras?
I don't know, what year?
About twenty, four nine, ten?
It's about seventy-five.
What's the bond?
That bond, that bond.
She's got a team.
It's about seventy-five, I wonder.
Huh, it's seventy-five?
About seventy-five.
About twenty, ten.
Those are the cameras that, uh, Councilman Bowleen keeps...
I got you now.
Where the cameras, where the cameras, where the cameras?
No, I got you, okay.
That's what it was.
Got you, thank you for that, really, thank you.
My next item is, uh, council assets.
Yes, ma'am.
We come to the buildings, I wanna know, uh, the assets for the councils with the buildings. You know, it was a couple of things that, uh, that, uh, we spent a while, because we couldn't, uh, have assets, you know, uh...
When you say access?
When I mean like, the keys, like you wanna, like, I was trying to work on a project, uh, back here in twenty seventeen.
Okay.
Twenty seventeen, I was trying to, uh, be able to go, is, the house is on that way. And, uh, I was working on, uh, uh, we was trying to put in, uh, a program into our community.
I recall that conversation, right?
And, uh, I wanted to go into the house, which we had a group of people that were, were gonna be a part of this. And, um, we couldn't get the keys, we couldn't get the keys to go in there, to look around and see what, what we would have to do, what need to be done, remodeled, to bring it up, or figure what, uh...
Right.
Equipment has to go in.
So, uh, part of that is, um, the first thing was, at the time, the police department was actually, um, trying to figure whether they're gonna utilize that facility just as a place to be in the community where people wouldn't have known the police was there in the community. And so, you know, we, we went free to discuss that at the time, um, given for uncoverable reasons, um, you can discuss. Um, the second thing is about, uh, what the conversation was, we're fine if the city council want to go into an agreement with a nonprofit and say we're gonna give this... Um, the second thing is about, uh, what the conversation was, we're fine if the city council want to go into an agreement with a nonprofit and say, we're gonna give this, uh, facility over or partner with this nonprofit to be able to utilize this facility. Um, but just to say we're gonna give individual keys and there's no accountability, no contract in place, is the issue, the concern that we have. Um, I actually have attorney, um, Jones looking into that now. Um, I talked with him about that and that's a concern, though. So if there's a nonprofit in your ward that wanna utilize that facility, the council can vote and say that we're gonna partner.
Yes, it was. It held me back with my progress of what I was trying to do for my community.
Right.
And I believe if I had had the chance to do these things and open it up, some of my issues that I'm having in my ward, communication.
Is it something that's still possible for you, or something that you're still interested in doing? And if so, I would urge the nonprofit to, I'm not sure how you all, um, carry that out, come to agreements and say what you do, and donate the facilities, right? Right. The same thing we do with the National Park Service as well, to build another street.
And that's what, uh, I have been, have been working on, and I don't want it to, uh, I promise the community that we will.
But it's a nonprofit, because it, Mr., Mr., Mr. President right here, right now, that's something that.
Yeah, it, the, the ladies that were involved with me, they, it is a nonprofit, and I, I do have, uh, I do have, uh.
Foundation?
Yes, I do have, um, I have a neighborhood association.
If you don't mind.
In Ward, Sarah.
If you don't mind, if you would give that information to President Bull and talk with attorney to go ahead and have that memorandum of understanding drawn up. I'm like, I, I support whatever you're doing to try to improve your community, so that's, that's, it's not that we don't want you in there at that facility, it was just that we have the police looking at it and it need to be some kind of memorandum of understanding or some kind of contract.
Well, I knew back, I knew a couple of times that they, they really didn't, they, they didn't use it really, really. They just came in and you might see them in there maybe about six months out of the year.
Got you, okay.
They'll go in, 'cause there's no electricity, there's nothing on in there.
Yes.
Nothing on, not even, it's no furniture or anything in there. And, um, the house has been sitting there for a minute, and, um, we, uh, wanted to do something to help our community, to build a relationship with people that had issues and things, and people that were volunteer to work with me on this program.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just wanna know, in, in, in case now that we're sitting here with, with some of our city buildings and stuff that we can use in our community, we have.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. P?
Yes, ma'am.
The reason why I, I asked you to come today, I was, uh.
Get over here, Stu.
We don't have a mic, so. We did come on, we did, okay.
You don't want to. Sit right here, you may be.
Through the camera.
There's a lot, I, I, I understand, um, there's, I've been doing a little research and investigating myself. I wanted to know, uh, with, uh, with our insurance proceeds, we've been had a lot of, uh, uh, equipments taken from the city, from bombos and, uh, uh, a lot of good things. When things like that happen to the city property, what effect does that brings on the city with our insurance?
Right.
Because we have, the reason why I asked you is because that, uh, we have to do better security with the city property.
Right.
And the reason I asked you, because during the year of twenty, twenty-eighteen or twenty-seventeen, there were a lot of bannings, there were a lot of things taken. And in that period up to, to this point, uh, what would you say, uh, the money that, uh, the amount that really has been paid out to the city, whether the city equipment's being taken, you know, things up and down, down on our, uh, city property?
Right. And, and, Ms. Thomas, that would be during what time period, whether calendar year eighteen or?
Uh, we're gonna start, when it really starts, was in twenty, I think.
It's on the seventeen, I think.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Seventeen.
I know, most of it was seventeen.
Seventeen.
Most of it was seventeen.
A lot in, uh, a lot in twenty-seventeen, uh, there was a lot of things happening during that time.
Special regulation.
Same here, regulation, how that works.
Yes.
And, uh, I guess the, the first thing is that we can produce that document, that's the first thing, which will have all losses that the city has sustained during, uh, the calendar year. And I say, of course, you're running from October to October, so for that policy period, so we'll do sixteen to seventeen, seventeen to eighteen, and then, uh, and that will give you a pretty good feel for what it has been. If that, uh, we call them loss runs in our business, so it will give you the, the date of loss, a brief description of what happened, the amount of money that has been paid, or the amount of money that is in reserve for the payment of the claim. For example, the St. James, uh, is just, is coming to a conclusion, and that's, you know, upwards of three hundred eighty thousand dollars. Uh, is what that amounts, what that claim is probably, where that claim is going to settle. We just did, that was, uh, uh, lovely, I think, was a little bitter.
Right.
Uh, I did not look at that bit, I'm sorry. Was that?
It was, uh, hundred and forty, yeah.
Okay, can I ask you something? I would like to have, uh, I would like to have a record.
Absolutely. That, and we can, we can do that. We're doing that monthly on the, uh, for you, on the workers' compensation. And so we can just produce that same document for you, uh, on a monthly for your, uh, fire liability claims, uh, and have that available for your committee.
That's what I'm saying. In order for, we want to, when you say we work together, we want to know how the city, when, when these things are happening to the city property, and the, the funding, the insurance is cut.
Right.
And when you pay these claims off.
Right.
We wanna see the amount of being paid for these claims with these buildings, that what's going on. And we wanna be able to work, uh, a way that we can make sure that, uh, our security is the number one in this building.
Right.
And, uh, but, we use the example for Recreation Department, uh, where you should have, uh, where they have things taken.
Right.
And, uh, they're supposed to have cameras out there. So we wanna see why the camera, you know?
There are cameras out there, Ms. Thomas. I think with the Recreation Department in particular, we think it's someone who may have been a former employee, because they made sure they ran around the cameras. You can see activities inside that went, they never crossed the cameras, so we think it was, may, maybe somebody who apparently had worked there before. So maybe we can just add more cameras or do something about that, but most of these instances where we had things stolen, we felt like there was some type of interconnection, or we had a, 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 um, a whole string of, um, businesses who experienced, uh, theft. Not just the seed of seven, they were stealing lawnmowers and a whole lot of other businesses as well, and I think actually our police department apprehended them. They would have some kind of re-go through Bradville, um, to Georgia, so, um, you know, I think that's why they cut down some of the stuff that they stole. And then the Recreation Department did something else creative, which I'm not gonna say here to, to make sure someone tried to steal something. Now that, uh, it'd take a few hours to try to, try to, try to get.
And, Ms. Thomas, one thing that we can do also is have, uh, the loss control engineer come in, meet with this committee, uh, and then have that individual here to say, okay, this is, this is what we're seeing, not only in Selma, but other cities throughout, the Black Bell, North Alabama, South Alabama. And talk about what they're doing to help in, in, in reducing that chance of loss, uh, and, and what safety measures they're putting in. Now, we should, you know, it is, yeah, we have had an uptick here, uh, in the, in the amount of activity, theft activity, not only for the city, but throughout the entire city. Uh, but it's happening in other parts, but we can learn, we can see what they've done is to help to try to minimize the chance of loss.
And that's what I'm talking about, like you just said, other cities trying to secure their city buildings with the city property.
Right.
Because when they take all of, uh, the break-ins and the bombos and fires and things are being done, we want to do that.
Yeah, it will, and I, I applaud you for that, because we are getting, getting to a point where if it does continue that trend, both from a liability claim and from a property claim, AMIC is gonna really start taking a hard look. And that doesn't mean that they would necessarily retreat from the coverage, but it could mean that it would be substantially higher deductibles for the city, which in turn would, which would have a financial impact on the city.
And, uh, I applaud you for what you just said about giving us the explanation, because I think the, the citizen of the city needs to know what happens to these buildings.
Right.
When, uh, people break in them and what effect that it caused, the insurance, you know, what, what, what it's causing. Uh, I would like to, you know, I would like to start that with our community.
And when, what, when do I know?
So we can, we can let the public know. I like to keep the public informed more.
Absolutely. And when do you need them? I mean, we can, you let them.
Well, I would like to start, since we started this first meeting, I would like to have for the next meeting.
Okay.
Because I, I want people in this city to know when things happen, uh, to these buildings and, uh, how the insurance, how, how much you pay out.
Right.
For this is being taken, and, uh, we're gonna be good stewards, trying to find a way to work together to, to, uh, make the buildings secure.
Right.
Because if we sit here, we just said, we stayed safe, we only have two buildings.
Right.
And we have other buildings that are not, you know, but we just wanna work.
It was not secure, the rest of them are secure.
So the rest of them are? So we wanna work on trying to get the Dallas Academy and the other building, uh, the Smithman?
That's the wiring in the Smithman and the Dallas Academy building, the wire.
The wiring is bad?
Uh-uh. It's something that happened with the wiring, you know?
So you, so you really haven't had anybody to check, see what happened to the wire?
They, now, I T-checked all of this before the buildings was closed, before the Smithman building was closed, and that's when we found out that the wiring was, yes.
Oh, so some, somebody took the wire. Uh, had, has it been replaced back yet?
It's closed now.
Uh, even one of them is banned, you know, it's up there.
Yep, so, Ms. Thomas, is that on the first Tuesday of the month is when this committee meets?
I would like to have it. Mayor, what's, what, what's your schedule?
Now, my schedule, that's great.
Okay, your schedule. But I want the city, what, what I'm trying to do is, you have to get the city involved.
Correct.
And I want to get people, more people to come out. I want people to, when we have these committee meetings, when we talk about things being taken and things are going on, we want the public to be able to come out. That's the purpose of the committee.
And I, I applaud, I applaud you in doing, uh, doing, um, these committee, having committees, um, are you saying you're gonna meet once a month, or you're gonna meet twice a month, and if so?
We'll, we're gonna meet once a month.
Do they necessarily have to be at the same time?
No, they don't have to be, well, this time we, I tried to practice, but we had my committee, but I, I wanted to find out.
I'm saying because what we can do, if, if it's, if it don't have to be a late and stone, and time is stone, we'll see that money, and we'll, we'll book it in advance, and that way I make sure I'm booking things on that time that you wanna have your committee meet.
Okay.
Unless something happens, just come up and admit to that building publicly.
Right.
We can just call, call it immediately.
And, Ms. Thomas, then based on that, uh, what we'll do is I'll have the reports ready by the end of the month, the thirtieth or the thirty-first, we'll run the report, and that way get them to you. Now, do you want them delivered to you, to the president?
It don't matter as long as we get them, you know, it's, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Well, you can, you can make sure that I get them and I pass them on to the committee, and, and I want to make sure that the citizen himself, I want, I want them more, this is how I want the city to get involved.
Right.
I want the city to be involved with what's going on, so we'll know how, when these things are taken and how, you know, how insurance is getting that.
Would it be okay with your permission, now, I'll have the mayor, now, I'll CC the mayor and the president, the council on that, on that document.
Mr. P, thank you for addressing her, her initial question on how it's gonna affect our insurance.
Right.
So thank you for, you, you touched on that briefly, uh, but at some point, do you all come back to the committee or to the mayor's office or, or someone to have consultation concerning, hey, you are on, uh, on a threshold, you are at the threshold?
Yeah.
You're about to, uh, have AMIC look at this, uh, and report becomes an emergency, do you, uh, do consultation and say, this is almost an emergency, uh, these are some measures that you might only do now?
Yes, ma'am. And I think we're at that point. Again, uh, there's, AMIC, you know, renewed the policy this year with no increase, uh, but I think going into next year, if the trends continue, I don't think we'll have that luxury. Uh, they are committed to the city of Selma as they are to all, you know, to the, to the entire state. But yes, it, it's gonna be, what we need to do is to, to get ahead of a, of a premium increase or a deductible increase that then puts the city in a financial position they don't wanna be in. So the, the shortage, yes, and that goes back to that loss control individual coming in, going over, and then I think, I think, you know, it's a great point, just look at it monthly, and you can see the trends that are developing that give rise to concern.
And my concern is this too. When these, uh, when these incidents happen, uh, who do you, do you go through the clerk, or do you go through the HR department?
Right now, yeah, I think we're getting all of them through the clerk right now.
So, let me ask you this here, and I want, I wanna be straight, I like, I want to be straight up.
Sure.
With all of these incidents that have happened, our city clerk, she has, uh, been involved with these documentations showing where, uh, this incident, the report that's been filed, she files, she files these reports?
No, we do, she.
No, I'm saying she put the claims in.
Right, she gives us an incident report, then we complete the loss notice to AMIC. AMIC then responds and let, acknowledges, receives, assigns a, a, a clean number and, and the adjustment.
Okay.
So that's, that's kinda the way the system works now.
Okay. And, Ms. Davis, I have a question for you. You're over all of the buildings, you're the, the director over all the buildings, and when these, when these incidents happen, you're the first, who responds to you about that?
Whoever goes and see that, like, can have the Dallas Academy.
Mm-hmm.
They called me and told me that they saw that incident. All I do is, again, I call the police, file a report. Ms. Duncan was, I think, was the first one to call me for Dallas Academy.
Okay.
When she called me, I told her to call the police. She called the police. The police came out and did their report. Then she wrote me a statement, a letter, a memo, telling me what she saw when she got there.
Okay.
Same thing with Dallas.
So they, so.
And then we called, they called the police, we called the police, and I get the, I have to wait until you get the police report back.
Okay.
Once I get the police report back, then I send it to the clerk.
I just wanted to know, because it would be, uh, according to the way, uh, Mr. P has told us, and then you tells us, I wanna make sure that we say the clerk, she has.
It goes from me to the clerk, and the clerk goes to insurance company.
And, okay, when, when it comes to the bid situation, when it comes back after like you did for the thirty, for the bid of the company, who makes that decision, what bid gets that? Do you?
No, that, at that time, it is, once it was, for example, if we take the, uh, Dallas Avenue, I mean Dallas Academy, once that's done, the insurance company hired a third-party capital that would then create the document so that everybody, from a, from a contractor standpoint, of what was gonna be done, and then they submit the bids. And within that bid document, it will dictate, you know, the time, the place, when the bid's gotta be received and reviewed. Once that's done, the insurance company, it's not the insurance company's decision whether to accept or reject the bid, it remains with the city.
It remains with the city.
That's, that's correct.
So you make the.
No, we use the, the, the process of the city, you can speak more, come for the council, but usually in, in time passed, the council will go with, and you all correct me if I'm wrong, with the lowest bill.
What, was that done this time with the Dallas Academy?
They haven't moved forward, they just.
Well, they haven't, so it is coming before.
Well, insurance side actually did it, 'cause we didn't oversee the project, the insurance. Right, AMIC, they, um, they said they represented them, because they gave us options, they said, we can give you a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the repairing of the Dallas Academy building, and anything that exceeds that amount, the city will be responsible. And I said, well, what if we don't take the one twenty-five? They said, well, we will cover anything that exceeds the one twenty-five, we just all of it, and so we decided to allow them to do it, 'cause we knew it was gonna be more than one twenty-five.
So, if we allow them to do it?
Right, right. Well, the lowest bid came out of a hundred and forty, so, the other guy who wanted the bid, did not bid, he signed up the bid, and the other bid was two hundred and thirteen thousand or two, something like that. The safe.
The change, a hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Right, it's like a sixty-something thousand, fifty thousand.
Absolutely. And I will say that Amick has paid in addition to the one forty-nine, too, that they accepted if I'm looking at that, right, the president. They've expended another close to fifty thousand dollars in architectural fees, consulting fees. So it's, uh, uh, Amick has done really an exceptionally good job. And, and what they're doing is also, they wanna make sure that the city is compliant with any rules that may come into play. And so that's why they go the route that they do.
Okay, so when they start, you know, when they start on the Dallas Academy, since it has been awarded to.
Yeah, once, I think, again, I can only. Let's say that once you're awarded, then it's gonna go back to whatever the council assigns to whatever entity then to manage it. So we rewarded it to Love Lady, Love Lady, Love Lady's contacted in the process, talking.
Amick is supposed to do a contract, that's the, that's the stepping on there. They're doing the contract for Love Lady. And once they do the contract, and Love Lady sign off on the contract, then they will start working there.
That's why, well, the reason why I'm asking, because I want to know, I mean, this, this is the committee that I just got on. And I'd like to know, I have questions that I want to ask. So I'm asking, I hope I'm not.
And I will say they do. And, and a good part about this process is the, the third party capital that's been hired. It is, they're, a part of the fee that they're being paid is to manage the contract. To make sure that Love Lady is adhering, whoever's awarded, uh, it, it adheres to the contract.
And of course, mine gets lost, probably.
And this is why I asked that, because I want to know, uh, 'cause when, if something happened again, I wanna go through the. My next, uh, I got, oh, I got no question, I miss you. But this is, this is something that I want the public, and I'm glad that you be willing to give, so we can give to the public about.
And what I understand, that, that what I'll give to you by the end of the month, request I give, uh, in that email, uh, is the loss runs for that month. And those will be both property and liability claims. Uh, and the, the liability claim will, will not have a wording. If, if, if I just, let's say that I did something, you know, we've had an issue with potholes. And, and it'll, and that's what it'll say. It'll just be a, 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 a brief description there. And then we'll let you know if they put a reserve, that means what they think they're gonna pay, or they'll simply say, no payment made or denied. And it will let you, you'll be able to see that.
So right now, with all of our buildings and the claims they have been filed, you have paid out on all of the claims itself, these St. James?
Actually, St. James is set for payment. Uh, a proof of loss has been, is city, is, the city clerk does have that proof of loss. Uh, awaiting instructions from the council. Uh, I will say this, uh, and, and I think President Lou and, and Mayor, I think we discussed this, that of the terms for the agreement.
Correct.
Uh, if I may speak to that. The terms of agreement on the sale of the St. James to the individuals that are, that are buying the building, was that the insurance proceeds would be held in escrow, okay? Because technically, the payments are gonna be made to the city, and that's the owner of the building at the time of loss, and that is the insured. Then those funds, uh, would be held by the closing attorney. And as the repairs are made, those funds would then be dispersed. So the point being is, is that those funds will not be dispersed until all repairs are done.
So all the repairs that they filed at the St. James before the owner.
That's right.
Be released to him.
That, now, the release may occur prior to that, but, but the, the, but, but the money is not gonna be released until the, until the repairs have been done.
Thank you.
What about the bomb smoldering, have those funds been dispersed?
The bomb and the.
The money for the air conditioning.
But you said the day that I said it's already been discussed. Been discussed? Oh, we, we'll talk with you later. Uh, my next, uh, on the list is, uh, twenty eighteen, where a remodel. Uh, Ms. Pete, is it?
I won't get out of that too.
Uh, this is, uh, to Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis, from, well, I say, twenty eighteen's. Uh, the remodel. Uh, do, do you have a report on all of the remodel that you done?
Do you know some can, can move?
Well, you three, I know you got it now, but I'm just asking.
I don't think you asked for a remodel, you found some repairs.
You know what I said, what you mean when you say? Like, like when you, uh, like stuff we do to the city building.
Right, I said repairs, not remodel, okay, 'cause we haven't, we haven't gone in and did remodel and.
Well, did you, did you do this, this, ain't this our building down here? This is Welcome Center? Is that our, is that our building?
Yes, well, that was seventeen, that was from seventeen, back in the. She's talking to back end of the Washington, nineteen Washington Street.
No, no, I'm talking about here, where you said the thing fell in the ceiling. Okay, okay, well, that's a lot of repairing to do. Um, um, it's the ceiling.
Right.
Then you have to, then you have to, uh, it did, it wasn't like a little silver repair.
Right, right.
Okay, well, okay, well, then I'm.
I just didn't want you to think, I didn't want you to think we didn't revamp the bill, when you say remodel, I didn't want you to think we revamp the bill.
Okay, well, the reason why I ask you this is, uh.
She can get you the repair report.
Our repairs, the, the account that the repairs comes out of, I do the, the maintenance for the bathroom.
No, no, can I answer, now I tell you what I'm talking about. When I say the repair, I mean the man, like, uh, when you, uh, you have, you like, you have a cap set up for like things on for the chair that you have to use. Okay, your, your exactly amount that's set up in there is the amount, it, does it cover everything that you need to get done? Okay, can we ask you this question? The amount of money that you have to do your, how many, did we have seven? Out of the seven buildings that you have, and your amount of money that you received to do the work.
I don't receive the money, your money that's in the budget for?
Yeah, okay. Then, then when I say receive, that means your money that you give for your department.
I don't want, I don't, as you say, we being filmed, I don't want nobody to know that I'm receiving.
Okay, well, the, the part, okay, the money that you receive for your department, for the buildings, uh.
I don't receive the money that's in the budget for the bill.
Of further repairs. Uh, in the year of twenty eighteen, uh, you have a, I would like to see the report of the buildings, uh, the areas that, that had to have a work done. Does that be, do, do you be included with this damage?
Would you be in the?
So what did that come out?
Uh, planning development.
Planning development?
Yes, ma'am.
So planning development has a, uh, a part of the city property building that they have funds?
The planning development have.
I, I know it, but it's still city buildings.
Yes, ma'am, it is city building, right.
Okay, well, the reason why I'm asking you is here. The we, that's why I said we need to, I'm, I'm asking you only for, I'm only asking you for your, your, the report of your maintenance repair, you say, yeah, this, this second. Then I'm coming to you, ma'am. Mr. Henry is not here.
I wouldn't want more that you want him in this meeting.
Well, I didn't know he was a part, uh, I didn't know that he is a part of the city, that he is a part of that building, the city. Welcome Center is a part of.
What President Lou was saying, you know, that's, it's in, um, plan development budget for the Welcome Center.
She does cover public buildings, but he can't, Henry can do several things.
Well, you know, I'm just saying.
Several magical things.
You have to be a part of that city property. So you got seven.
But, but I have more than seven. What is, uh, so, um, Councilwoman Thomas, I maintain this building. Okay, uh, and that allows, that's what I was trying to tell you when you cut me off. And maintain this building, what comes out of that budget, I have to do everything, the plumbing, everything comes out of there. Okay, okay, if a light bulb needs to be replaced, it comes out of the budget. And so everything comes out of it.
So it's not just, it's not just for repairs, it's for everything.
Well, the reason why I ask you, and why I ask you.
Okay, you know, why I ask you, because I see with some of the buildings that you're over, like, uh, some of the things that have not been done.
Give me the money.
That's why I'm asking you, and, and the reason I ask you that because of, uh, we were talking about going on the feet. And if there are some things that need to be done, that's why, that's why, but let me tell you.
Usually, before we got into what we meant to man, in the situation at the city center now, at the end, I would do maintenance, 'cause I can't just stop and do a whole big project. So I would wait to the end of the year, and at the end of the year, I would do maintenance. I did maintenance on the, I did maintenance, do repairs, other issue repairs. I did one George Evans building, I did some of his building, and I stopped because we never went to finish. Okay, I cannot take the eighty-five thousand dollars that I have and do all of this when I, when I got to do other things.
That's why I ask you, I want to know.
And that's why the, the people could, could answer. I have planned to do this and could do that. The wood around it will replace, a lot of stuff will be done, but I don't have money to do it. And right now, like I said, in this situation, I can spend money with this guy. Or that's, that's where it is.
And now, I'm asking you still about, you say, Henry, he, but he's still city.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, with the repair that's done down here at the Welcome Center.
Yes, ma'am.
He has to, uh, fund it, does, does he have, does he have the D N F to do that repair?
Uh, I would have to get with Mr. Thompson, and he can give you a report on that. Uh, I'm not sure exactly, I can't recall on how they proceed with that, I would have to get with him, I can get it to you.
And see, that's why I was asking, with all of the city property, the buildings and everything, if we're gonna be, if the council is over, uh, I have a committee over the city property, like the lights, the streets, the buildings and stuff. And I just wanted to know who was over it. You know, I'm thinking that Ms. Davis was, was handling that too.
Right, no, I, Mr. Thomas, Thomas, but I can get him to get a report on the repair of that building for you and all the work that's been done down there.
Okay.
I'll do that.
All right, thank you. And I'm coming to my next item is dealing with the cemetery.
Yes, ma'am.
The Lincoln Cemetery, out here, we're going out, uh, to the stadium.
Oh, New Live Oak?
Yes.
Okay.
At, at the New Live Oak Cemetery, I was, I noticed something. We have tours, uh, and we have, uh, cemetery out here in itself.
No, we also have it, right?
Uh, both of those cemeteries, uh, you know, you know, we have funerals all the time.
Yes, ma'am.
We have funerals every week, and we bet it. And, um, what got my attention, I, I want us to be more, uh, work on our city property, the, uh, the landscape part.
Well, the issue with that is, if you recall, prior to the layoff, um, it was nine gentlemen out there who was, um, responsible for the people of cemeteries. Uh, now, I think it's only three out there, and nine was not enough to maintain, uh, think, um, I wish, I knew there was gonna be discussion about that, um, Mr. Um, well, Mike Petway, Mr. Petway, he can speak more about that. At one time, I think it was twenty-some employees in the cemetery department gave them more manpower to do the cemeteries, 'cause according to Mr. Petway, it takes time to, to cut, and it was very various, but I'm saying, so if you've seen something that's not.
No, no, no.
Where it used to be, it's because of lack of manpower, and they're, they're, you know, getting to it as quick as they can.
No, I was speaking on before the layoff.
Okay.
In our cemetery, when we had the four, uh, people, the employees working there, uh, some are upkeeping. You know, we had manpower, the, the, the residents have.
No, we never had the manpower.
Well, no, what I'm saying.
We had more, we had more.
People out there.
We had more.
And, uh, you know, some of the, the things I did when we had the people working, we need to be more, keep our cemetery, 'cause a lot of people were speaking about it. So, right now, I, I know for a fact that I've been there, and I've been involved. I had a tourist bus came through the, is that the? And the New Live Oak Cemetery, and I was gonna call some of the people, the residents of all of those cemeteries, and we can work together to try to, when tourists bus come through our community and they go through there, which we haven't had any work done, or clean up over there, in that area, the, there's a lot of garbage. There's a lot of, there are a lot of, there are broken lamps, and a lot of stuff that's over there in our cemetery. And you know that when you have people, you have funerals going in. So, I, I don't like when the bus come through, or bus load of people come through our town and we see that our community where it, it's not being taken care of. You know, people go back and say, you know, when is up to the bus and, you know, we went to, just supposed to be in there, and it, it's not up. So I just want us to, you know, count, you know, we can work together on that.
Yes, ma'am.
And we have a bad problem, you know, next to our streetlights. When is the last time we, uh, do we have streetlights in place? Do we have, uh, like, our city's streetlights, you know, who, do we have funds for that, to get those streetlights? Because in some areas, you could tell where we having problems with the streetlights.
With, with that situation, that's, you know, we've, we've, we've talked about it before. If the council votes to authorize me to enter to new contracts for more power, more streetlights, by all means, we're executing that, but that's nothing in place right now for putting up new lights.
No, replace lights.
That's a call with Alabama Power, you said.
No, no, I'm talking about streetlight, our streetlights, city lights.
Oh, some of the ones we own?
Yeah, red, the lights.
Oh, you're talking the traffic, traffic lights? We don't have the money, we have zero for traffic lights.
But I'm saying, right now, we in our community, we have lights out, you know, like, you call.
So here's the issue with that. But here's, here's the issue with the guy who did that, um, it's only one person on staff can do that. And he was training someone, and I had to find out how he's doing right now, I'm not even sure he's back with us right now.
'Cause those lights cause a lot of accidents.
That might be him, so, yeah, but he was training someone, he was trying to train someone, then I had to check, I know somebody's on the planet, we're just having to see if it's him or not, get a check back and see if it was him. But, but what I would love for us to consider moving forward is updating our streetlights and making them LED lights and timing to our broadband, which would be a whole lot cost effective and can help a whole lot with other issues we may have with traffic. That's long term, no, it's not some quick fix, but I would love for us to consider that, should move forward, and I can get, um, someone to come present to the committee, uh, to talk about that, if you'd like to.
I, I would because of, I, I see this, and, uh, it's bad in my, in my area over there. And, uh, a couple of other streets, you know, when you get to the street light, it's not working. And one, always stay cautious, and you'll be on the full, full lane, and, uh.
That's probably the, I gotta make sure he's, he's mad.
Yeah, 'cause I called Cory, um, and told him to put a work order in, and in my area, I have two that constantly goes out and they come back and fix them. And, um, they go right back out, and they, you know, you got a four-way stop, and when that light out, I've seen a couple of accidents.
Most of the days, what you see, the reason probably is going back out because they are basically, they don't have all the resources they need to repair those lights to the full capacity. So I guess Mr. Lou, he, he's such a creative mechanic, he know how to get them back up to the running. But I think actually some of the lights need to be totally replaced, right, and equated. Because I might try to build something else like, so.
No, well, thank you, um, the next meeting, I plan to help.
Let's get together and, time for the time, so we'll know what time we're going to do it. If you would check with the senators from the council, so we know what time we can, I make sure I'm available for your time, that you, both our schedules are.
You could just send an email to Mayor Office, because I sent you one from Mayor Office, when you didn't answer your, your phone, I sent you an email from Mayor Office, so you could just send an email to Mayor Office, and I'll respond.
Councilwoman, before you close. Before you close, we know that two schools are about to close, Cedar Park and Berwick School, that's Ward Three, and that's Ward Four. And Councilwoman Short is still here, and Ms. Davis, one of y'all might know, when this reverts back over to us, is it just the property? Was, was that a vacant lot when they put the school up? Does the school belong, does the building belongs to the school? Property belongs to the school or both? Okay, so in that case then, Councilwoman, can you, or could you sign one of us on the committee to find out if they are going to prepare the leaks, make repairs before it reverts back over to the city itself? Because if they don't, it's going to be a burden on us. You all know that I got plans for that, not to be an abandoned building in Ward Four, and I'm sure Councilwoman Jackson does too. But we don't want to, uh, we don't want to inherit things that are wrong with the building already, because they have been in possessions of the building, that, so they should, in my opinion, repair them before turning them back over to us. I don't mind at all. Yeah, I don't mind finding out at all, because, you know, it was told to us to, we should have considered about the four hundred thousand dollars, but I don't think anyone considered, when they say they have a buyer for our buildings. I didn't know about buyer for our buildings until I talked to someone, and those revert back.
Councilwoman, can you repeat that, buy for what building?
Ward Three and Ward Four schools.
Your school system is trying to sell our property?
And there is, and, and here's the thing, I don't want an abandoned building in Ward Four, so if it's something educational, I don't mind that I leave it alone.
It could be a sin, I hope you don't be awarding.
But to, to find a buyer and not even let us know, that's two different, it's just two different things. You asked us to do one thing, and then on this hand, we have not been consulted to date on this, Councilwoman, just got a phone call. You know, I haven't either about selling these schools, and that's why I was asking Councilwoman Short and Ms. Davis if they knew, if this school was an ours.
I think we'll watch down, trying to pull that contract, so that we can know specifically, yes, how. My memory thinks Ross ceased to be an education consultant, and works, and is preparing the back end secret.
And I pulled the, I went to the Dallas County Courthouse, before I do my, yeah, and I pulled the, the, you know, the D, and I pulled the, it's the, what, property with the. They have a sketch. I have another, I pulled another sheet too, with the layout of the property.
I was leaving your phone, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, I had it too, I, I did a little research, I, I, I went, I went and pulled, I went, went a little deep, pulling stuff to see before we bring it to everyone's attention.
Because those will become city property.
Find out, I will get the time.
Well, okay, and before we do, I want to make sure they, so they can understand about the. The bond swiftly. That we have to bring it back to the council to decide, and there you said.
I'm like, if you all want to, as property, as capital equipment, if you all want to replace that, by all means, we will. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we want to, we want to be, so people here, so we can go back, we want to be on the right. Right page, that we are going to bring it back to the council, the council will.
I would add to that, they only gave thirteen thousand, from my understanding, Davis said it's twenty-three thousand, so the council will be responsible coming up with ten thousand.
Hold on a minute, listen ladies.
It was two different accident reports. Each accident report is a five thousand dollar deductible.
Okay.
The second accident report that was done, they did not, it did not even meet the deductible.
Oh, the second accident report did not meet the deductible?
So you got to pay that five thousand dollars for both, that's ten thousand dollars that you got to pay.
For five thousand per incident, plus twenty-three thousand total, leaves us with ten thousand.
So we have to come, so now to order for.
Five thousand each, right? Ten thousand, right? So ten thousand we're dealing with.
Is there a reason that if we came up with the ten thousand dollars, we couldn't go on and get the air conditioners installed?
Well, I would like for you to bring that before.
I know, I'm just telling you some things that, that I would like for you to bring up.
Well, well, you get with me, and we'll talk. We'll, we'll bring before the council, we'll talk about it. Give me what you're suggesting, what you want to do, and then we'll bring it before the council. Because it's not on here now, and we want to do things the right way.
Can we just say you have the business of time?
Yeah.
Are there any recommendations, report Mary Lee, are there any recommendations coming out in this meeting to the council? Are we making any recommendations, or we coming back to revisit?
No, no, we, the recommendation has already been that we want to report.
The contract, it'll be the contract, let's see the attorney get the contract. Yeah, they'll sit the contract, and as you said, you want to look, you want the attorney looking to, some things you all gave the court. I forgot what you gave the court to do, President Boyd, President Boyd to do, he gets with the attorney, so that's serious.
Uh, one more question, sir. What, say it, Ms. Jackson?
The gate, that appears, I wrote in the notes, the gate around the AC units, the cameras, that's a recommendation.
Yes, now, I brought that to your attention, but we're going to bring it before. Before the council.
You're going to bring it for.
I want to know this.
Yeah, it's going to be in your report.
In your report, right, I can get, I can get the thing from here for you.
Thank you. Oh, what you got?
Three recommendations?
Uh, contracts, removal of staff, gates, and cameras.
Yeah, we got that.
Okay.